I'll call the meeting to order at 6:37. And welcome everyone to our Zoom meeting. Hopefully, I don't think they are, but I hopefully, oops, let me get recording turned on.
Here we go.
And now we're recording and like I'm saying, welcome to our Zoom meeting. And we are hopefully going to be having some in-person meetings sometime soon, but I just don't know yet. We'll wait for the governor to clear things up a little bit. Oops, here's somebody else, Q W Q. I don't know who that is. Write that down just for that. Okay, so now that the meeting is open, the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on June 23rd, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 23rd, 2020?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to appoint John WitoVich, or WitoVik, to the reg- as a regular member of the Conservation of Inland Wetlands Commission. If you remember, we, George Atwood had decided that he wanted to step down as a regular member and become an alternate. John already was an alternate and somehow or another, we forgot to move him up as a regular member. So if we can do that tonight, that's fine. He's been a member for quite a long time. His term will expire on 12/1/2020.
Well, I make a motion that we appoint John W O I T O V I C H. I don't want to massacre his last name.
Yeah, I already did that.
A regular member of the Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission, term to expire 12/1/2020.
I'll second it.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item forward, discussion of possible action on a proposed amendment to the employee pension plan. We brought this up a few months ago. Richard Cohen is one of our guests here today from Shipman and Goodman. He's been working on Deep River's pension plan, I think since its inception, but certainly, certainly for quite a long time. I'm going to share this screen unless, unless I am advised otherwise, of the revised amendments, or the proposed amendment. And really what this does, it allows for us to have, we, to have an employee continue working with the town at a reduced hours. Really, it goes right down, here we are, eligibility of participation has to have the at least age 65. Participant has to have completed at least 25 years of work under this plan. Participation, participant has reduced his or her work schedule with the employee by 33% or more, which will remain the reduced work schedule for the participant remaining in effect after his partial retirement date. Average monthly earnings shall be calculated as if the participant had retired in full from the employer as of the date. I think you've all had a chance to read this. Future true-up pension, if any, shall be payable in the same form of payment as partial retirement. And Richard, I think that you could speak to this, but because, well, I mean, let's, let's wait and see if we have any questions before we get going. Participants who die prior, no death benefit shall be paid payable under this Article 8 of the plan on account of a participant who previously received or commenced to receive a retirement fund. We had discussed this a few months ago. Richard's been working on this for, for a few months. We've had a couple of different iterations come down until we got to where we think it was palatable. I don't know if anyone wants to stop at any particular section on this. I'll just leave it here and we can discuss.
First, first off, I want to thank Richard for taking the time out to at least speak with myself and Jimmy and give me a little bit more insight on this. This is a very important amendment that we're going to be making, if we do make it one way or the other. As much as I can understand so far, it is, it is and will not affect the town with this amendment. What concerns me, I spoke to Angus this morning, Richard, and you followed up with the email with my question, and I'm still a little bit vague on the answer. So maybe you can give me a little help here. On page two, on the bottom of it, where it says, "The increase in such retirement benefit that is due to the increase in such average monthly earnings." So if someone retires next month, partially retires, and then works another two years, three years, five years, whatever, it gets recalculated at their new salary? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, let me, I just want to unmute myself. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you're good.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right. No, that, let me, let me take a minute to try to explain some of the, kind of the legalese.
Yeah.
The purpose of that language is to address a possible situation. It may not arise, but the example would be, you have an employee who, let's just use round numbers, the final average comp was 50,000. So, and let's make it easy. Let's say they went out, you know, at half pay, you know, 25 years. So 50,000 times 50% would be a pension of 25,000. And if they're at age 65, they had the full 25 years, and their schedule is being reduced by at least 33%, they would be eligible to commence their pension at that time. Now, the, let's say the person remains employed for another four years. None of those four years will count toward the pension calculation because they're at the maximum 25 years. The Deep River pension only counts service up to 25 years. But let's, let's add to the situation that the person, the person's final pay goes up by 5,000. You know, they worked four more years. Let's say they got a salary increase from, you know, 50,000 to 55,000 in that fourth year. So what we're saying here is that you don't, you won't go back and change any payments backward. So the person would have gotten the 25,000 a year, but now they retire in year five. Okay, let's use that as the example. So they actually worked five more years, so they got the in-service pension for five years, then they retire. At that ti- at that point in time, the actuary will do another calculation. It'll still be only 25 years of service, but the fi- the, the comp will now be 55, not 50. So the person's pension will now be half of 20, half of 55. So that's 27,500. So if the person is taking a monthly pension, starting in that fifth year, their pension will go up to take into account that their salary had gone up. So in my example, going into the future after year five, when they fully retire, then the pension would change from 25,000 to 27,500. So otherwise, you wouldn't be recognizing the fact that the person, you know, was still a town employee who remained eligible for the pension. So they don't get any different payments for those five prior years. It's just to take into account that they, they earned, you know, their salary went up. That, that's the purpose of that language. So it's not a disincentive to somebody, you know, stays employed, who's eligible for this provision.
And so the contributing entity, we'll call it, will still make the, the normal payments into the fund as they have been currently, correct?
Yeah, like you mean the town or the WPCA?
Correct.
Right. They'll still be funding, you know, the pension, you know, the-
Or, or his hours working in the, the second job, we'll call it.
Right. I, I, I'm not following, are you, when you say continue to contribute, are you talking about the, the employee has to contribute, or are you talking about the-
No, the, the town.
Right, right. Well, you know, this plan funds over time. So, you know, the actuary may say, "Deep River, you need to put in 300,000 to cover the, the benefits that are promised under the plan." So it might be that the town contribution could go from, these are, you know, 300,000 to 310,000 to take into account that this individual has a benefit that might go up by 2,500 a year. But-
So, the, the question I have, Richard, and, and we spoke yesterday, and I tell you what, what my professional job is. So in my instance, my men or women that work, there's an hourly contribution paid in on their behalf for their defined benefit plan, contribution for their benefit of pension. So what you're telling me, what I'm gathering right now is that we do not have that here in Town Deep, but we just have a lump sum contribution, correct? Or do we have a, you know, if I, if I work 40 hours a week, does it break down to $2 an hour? Does it break down to $5 an hour?
No, 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 no. It's not like a union, no. Okay, I see where you're going with that.
See where I'm going there. So I'm looking at the, what the, what the contribution is.
Right. This is not a per-hour plan. The formula for this is not, you know, the employer puts in X dollars for hours' work by a, by a union worker. This is not that type of a plan.
Okay, and that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, and that's why I'm asking these, these questions that I'm, that I'm asking.
Right. So my example would be in, you know, kind of the, now I, now I may be wrong. Again, mine was just an example. It might be unrealistic to think that somebody's salary would go up. The average salary for the plan might increase by 5,000 in four years of work. You know, so it, it might not be that the salary increases that much, but the, the idea is, and, and this is not, you know, the, the amendment could be, you know, this is just a draft. So, you know, if, if the pension, if the, if the, if the Board of Selectmen felt that, you know, why, why would we change even the salary for this person? If the person wanted to start their pension, let him or her start it, and that's going to be the pension, and we won't change it down the road. You know, that, that's not right or wrong. It's just, you know, is that, is that something that Deep River feels is, is, is logical or, or-
Actually, that is something I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any problem with putting that, something to that effect in here, that the payout remains the payout.
Right. And, and so, 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 yeah, so in other words, you know, the amendment is still a work in progress. This, you know, in my view, if there are suggestions here that, that you feel should be changed, then certainly, you know, that's, so that would be what Angus just articulated and what you were saying. You know, you would say, again, this is not a mandatory provision. This is an elective, something that somebody would elect. If he or she says, "I would like to start my pension, but I don't want to retire from Deep River. I want to, I want to, you know, remain somewhat in a, you know, reduce my schedule, keep, keep my employment." You know, and don't, don't forget, before I get to what Angus just said, if someone's schedule is going down by a third, and this was another point, Dwayne, that you had, I think, asked me yesterday. If, if, if somebody's position, work schedule is going down by at least 33%, they're probably not going to be making as much in salary as they used to.
Correct.
That's right.
Like, you know, that's, maybe a governor already that's going to take this into account.
If I'm not mistaken, Richard, that was the thinking when we came up with mandatory reduced hours and, and a number like 33% makes it practically impossible for someone's salary to, to increase enough to make, to make it so that his pension payout would be higher than what it, what it is now.
Right. It would be hard, yeah. Now, it would be hard to imagine that somebody's salary would overtake what their salary was when they, you know, went into partial retirement.
With that 33% reduction.
With the schedule, with the work schedule reduction. But you certainly, you certainly could, could do what Angus mentioned a minute ago, which is, if somebody wants to choose this option, it's a voluntary choice, then, you know, what they're agreeing to do is lock in their pension. And anything after that is a non-event. You know, you know, it's a non-event. You know, and, and if someone says, gee, that, that's, you know, I don't, I, why would I do that? Then they don't have to choose the option. But, you know, that, that, does that, does that answer your question, Dwayne?
Yeah, like we chatted yesterday, Richard, the world I come from is a different type of pension that we're talking here. My 3,500 members I represent work one job, and they contribute to one pension. So here, we're dealing with two, one person working two different jobs with two contributing entities paying into a pension. And so when my guys retire, my guys are allowed to work 59 and a half hours a month, and they can collect their pension. Great. But here, here, seeing that we have a, two different jobs, it's, it's hard to wrap my hands around. I support it. Everyone works hard to retire with a pension. But it's just trying to figure out what's right and what's wrong here. And, you know, no, but you've, you answered my questions and I'm good. But I just wanted to know about future contributions, you know, where they go, what, what happens to them. Like I said, I come from an hourly base contribution, so it's, it's different than what we do as a town. You know, so-
Right, right.
I'm, I'm for, if, well, like Angus suggested, if an individual's going to retire on August 1, and the pension's going to be $25,000, but he's still going to work, or she's going to work for another three years, well then it still stays at that rate. There's got to be something here for the town. But again, I'm open for any type of discussion.
Yep.
I'm not arguing for or against that, Dwayne, but I do think that, you know, that was thought of already when we put that, you know, the 33, 33% hourly reduction, or 33%, yeah, the time that they're-
Correct. It's a 33% less work they do. It's not a 33% reduction in pay. It's, it's the amount of time that they work is reduced by 33%.
Right. That, that's true.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, you know, it's, you know, in this day and age, it used to be in the old days, when somebody retired, they retired, got their pension, and went away and sat on a rocking chair. But those, those are the old days. The, I'm, I, I lean toward the, you know, if you elect this, like Richard said, if you elect this option, and the pension is X number of dollars, then that's what it is. Because somebody could work an extra year, they could, if they physically were able to, or whatever, and worked another 10 or 15, and there was all constant adjustments, then it would cost more and more money and whatnot. So I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor, if you're, if you're going to retire, that, that number is, is a fixed rate. And if, and if we as the town feel that we need that person, I mean, there's, there's a, you know, somebody, you know, a lot of companies, they retire higher-paid people and hire younger, less, less, less salaried people or whatever. And that's not, that's, I don't know that that's necessarily a good way to do it or not, but I don't think that's the case here. It's a, it's a matter, it's, it's, we, we want to have good people, and if those good people contribute to the town, and if we can make this work for them, I'm, I'm, I think we, we need to make it simple. We need to make it work out for the town, but we also have to make it work out, a workout for the employee. So.
Yeah. Angus, I, I was only going to, because there was one issue that I know, I believe even Dwayne and Jim had mentioned. And, and again, I think the amendment, you know, if I refer to it as a work in progress, the 33% work schedule reduction. I know that we had talked about, in, in the case of somebody who's working two jobs, the amendment right now just says, total their full worked hours, and, and say they have to drop that by a third. I wonder if the amendment should, should say that each job they do, again, my example is somebody who's doing two jobs, they have to reduce their schedule by a third for each job. Now, I don't, you know, I, I don't know if, 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 if that's a worthwhile revision. You know, so just to do it by example, if somebody's working two jobs and they're putting in 65 hours a week, is the idea that if they drop their combined schedule a third of 65 hours, that's, let's just say 20 hours. So if they, if they continue working 42 hours a week, but they're only doing one of the two jobs now, because they've decided not to continue in the other position, does that satisfy the one-third rule in the work schedule reduction? I had, I think Dwayne and Jim both kind of asked this question of me, and I said, "I think it's something that, you know, might, might be appropriate for the, you know, this meeting for the three of you to, to discuss that issue," or to-
Right.
If anything further.
Yeah. No, I, I actually don't think that that works. Because, you know, we don't have very many employees that work two different jobs for the community, one of which is part-time, one of which is full-time. When the person wants to retire from one of those positions, the part-time position, and focused on the full-time position, we, we, we reduce that. If we reduce that by 33%, that no longer is a full-time position. It no longer allows for that person to do the job that is required. So I don't believe that that works. I don't see this as, this, that particular example as lasting very much longer, but it is, it is a circumstance that we are faced with now. I, I think in the future though, I do like this, this amendment, because it allows for us to have someone who has worked for many years on the town crew, let's say, and he's got a good familiarity with the, with the snow plow. He doesn't want to work full-time, but certainly would, would fill in with us driving plow, or welding, or other specialties that we require someone to replace him to fill his position, but may not have the abilities. I think welding is probably a better example. So I think it allows for us to have retirees, folks that, that have worked for the town for, for, you know, at least 25 years, and, and allow them to continue to contribute to the community with their work, but also to, to retire, in essence.
And I, and I told you, Angus, I support that 100% under that scenario. We talked about it. Because, you know, again, we're, you know, we get a couple of big storms in a row, and we need some help, or we need some fabricating at the transportation, and we have that individual that is very good at that. I support that 100%. But that falls back to that gentleman or individual that works one position for the town.
Yep. No, I, I know it. And that's, that's, I was trying to, I was trying to show that, that this works for both, both instances in my, it allows for a person to retire from one position that he's held for over 25 years in a part-time role, but continue with the full-time role that began later, later, later on.
So, yeah, you know, the question I originally asked to, to you, Richard and Angus, and it said, "We can't do it." Again, I, I support 100%. And I'll say it again, I support 100%. If the individual was working two separate jobs, and we could have split his pension, where the time that he accrued as a police officer, we paid him out that pension, great. And then when he retires in two years, or three years, or four years, or whatever, from the, from his other job, and we increase it there, hands down, I support that 100%.
And that was the intent-
Right.
-when we first started this conversation.
Yep. And again, it's, you know, I, I think a lot of every, a lot of us all agree with 100% of that. But again, it's one pension plan, but you have two separate entities, so to speak, contributing on one individual.
Mm-hmm. No, that was the intent.
Yep.
Any other questions from the Board of Selectmen?
Well, the only, the only question I have is, and it's come up a couple of times in the, in the Zoom chat here, is, and I don't know how it applies, if it applies, but it's, John Kennedy has mentioned, can, can Shipman, can Rich address why this would not conflict with Connecticut statute, Chapter 113, Section dash 7 dash 430 for any police officer? I don't know, I don't know what that is. I have no idea if you, without discussion, can answer that question or not. Is, is there, is there separate union negotiations for police officers versus, you know, I don't know what that is. I have no idea what that is, and if it's applicable here.
I, Bruce, Bruce is on, Bruce is on the call as well. I, I have the statute in front of me, just so I could understand what the codes, this is Connecticut 7 dash 430.
Yeah, I just put that up on the chat.
Oh, okay, good. Let me go back to that. You, who, who put it up?
I guess, John Kennedy.
He's a citizen in town.
Oh, no, but I, I still see the amendment up, but how do you-
It's in the chat.
There's a chat.
Oh, go to the chat. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's in the chat, Richard.
Yeah, I'm in the chat. Okay. Okay. I got to enlarge it, though.
Yeah. Oh, look at that. I didn't see all that chat going on. Sorry, everybody.
Uh, pop out? Let's see. Oh, there we go. Okay, pop out. So, okay. Oh, yeah, okay. Any, okay, so let's kind of read this together. And I, I think Bruce, I don't know if you're able to pull up 7 dash 430, but it, it seems to say that, the heading is called involuntary retirement, temporary retention. "Any member shall be retired at any time after the member has become eligible for retirement upon the recommendation of the legislative body of the municipality by which he is employed. Any member, except an elected, elective officer who has reached the age of 65 years, if employed as a police or firefighter, shall be retired on the day following the attainment of such age, except that such member, at his request and with the annual approval of the legislative body, may be retained in the employ of the participating municipality, but such person shall receive no pension payments during the period he is so retained, provided for any member who add up before the end of three years after the effective date of participation." I'm trying, I'm not the compuls- I don't know.
Well, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but right up the headline is involuntary retirement. This is not- Well, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but right at the headline is involuntary retirement. This is not involuntary retirement right there, right off the top of the bat.
Yeah, you're not.
It's somebody that wants to retire, but from one position and retain a position and this is not involuntary. This isn't, this isn't an elective officer shall be retired. You know, um, this is, that almost sounds like a, you're, we're tired of you being there. We want you out type of clause to me, being a non-lawyer. I don't know.
And then it says. If someone's sixty-five and they're a fire or, or a police officer. They shall be retired. I don't know if you have officers who are allowed to, I assume you have people who can work past sixty-five. Who are police or fire.
Well, we have in the past. We don't right now have anyone who is that old. Um, we do have firemen who are over sixty-five, but they're not employed. They're voluntary.
Volunteers. Yep.
Right. But it, it seems to be saying that somebody can request that they be allowed to stay on past their normal retirement age.
Well, here's, here's the question that I have for that. And then this, you know, forgetting about the involuntary retirement. Um, this is, this, this, you know, we're not talking about someone who wants to stay on as a police officer, wants to retire from that role. Um. And continue working in his other role, which is as a civilian, not as a police officer.
And it's a voluntary thing that he wants to do.
Totally voluntary.
This language really doesn't, this language really doesn't pertain in this situation.
Correct. That's the.
I don't think so, but I'm, I, I would defer to the attorneys on that.
Yep.
Why I brought it up, it did seem to have some perhaps overlap or not.
Right.
Yeah. Well, if, if it's about the one individual who, um, is, um, I guess considering the retiring as the constable. Um. Yeah. I mean, it looks like. This is if the person wanted to continue as the constable.
Right. And that's not the case.
Doesn't want to do.
That's the opposite. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I think there's also, um, specific provisions for police and fire in the statute that. Don't apply in a lot of other instances for municipal employees. So I, I, I think this, this doesn't apply in the situation.
Okay.
Just a quick read on it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, well, it seems as if we've opened up for a bit of public conversation. And Dwayne, if you have any other, you have any other thoughts on?
No, I don't have any other thoughts. I want to, I want to make it, I want to make it work for whoever the individual is. If they've been along, a long time, good employee, reliable employee, and they want to like, is the trend now to start? Even if it was just one person, I mean, not one person, but one job, start a pension and continue to work because they don't, they want to continue to work, but they want to get some of the money that they paid in. This is a little different. This goes back many, many, many years on before Dwayne Angus or I were on the board. And, um, whether we at, at, in the future ever have. A person that has two jobs, one part-time, one full-time, you know, whatever it is, whether we as a town will ever do that again, I would, I would think to just. It would make sense not to have that kind of situation in, in the future, but we are in that situation now. And, um, and if we can make it so that it doesn't, doesn't have an impact to the town as, as far as, as money goes. And, and, and we have a, a grateful, um, not a grateful, but a, 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 a good employee that has done a good job and wants to. Start reaping some of, some of the benefits of all the work that he or she has put in. And I think we should, uh, we should do that. We're a small town. We're not, we're not looking to say, no, go pound sand. We're looking to make it work for everybody. So.
I think, uh, you know, I, I didn't think about this until you just made that comment, but if you think about it, we had a first selectman who had three jobs. Really, it was possible first selectman and, uh, and highway crew. So.
Yep. Yep. We did.
You know, this is not uncommon, I think, for Deep River in the past. I don't expect this will be anything like. Certainly, I don't intend to have anything like this happen again, but, um. But you never know. You can't say never. So, um.
And it, and just so it's on, on record Angus, you, you know, when I spoke about this also, um. We can't put a hard figure on it, but there is a potential savings, uh, would let this individual retire from the police department and hiring a replacement.
That, that's absolutely right. I mean, I mean, there are many ways, you know, I, I, first of all, I would not have even considered bringing this forward if I didn't. If I thought there was any harm to the town that it's not going to cost the town any, any additional monies that I can see. Um, and the, the other side of that is we will be able to, uh, hire a, a younger, um. Police officer. And I think that's a, that's a positive thing. And there will be a, a, a small reduction in cost of that.
Yep.
Um.
But any, any minor reduction is going to help the, the citizens.
Yep. So that's, that's a real positive.
Yep.
And, and, you know, the, the other role, um, I, I believe that he's beginning to, to phase himself out, but he's. He nor the town are ready to, for that to happen yet. He's, it's a. Well-functioning operation and, uh. Yeah. Hope, I hope it continues to stay that way. Um, any other thoughts from anyone?
Not from, not from me right at the.
The board, how about anybody in the public? John or Jim? Gary? I don't know who the other folk is. It's never identified as Q Q W Q or Lori. Any thoughts? Okay. Hearing none. Um, Dwayne and Jim, what do you think about, do you feel strongly that we should, um. Add that caveat to this? Do you think that, that the thirty-three percent reduction in hours is not strong enough to, uh, to, to limit the, uh. Limiting and increase in payout, uh, after additional three or four years of employment or two, four or three years of employment? Or do you want to ask, uh, Richard to, to add that caveat to this? My feeling is the thirty-three percent is, is a, is a strong enough reduction that, that.
Yeah. Then the number, the, one of the numbers we first was floated way back was, was it twenty or twenty-five percent?
Yeah, we've increased that, yeah.
Yeah. And that's increased to a, um, um, a, a better number, I think. Um.
I, I'm good. I'm good with.
Yeah.
With the thirty-three percent, um.
Okay.
I, I just. I don't, I don't want to see. Because the, the W P C A runs on their own, correct? That we, we as selectmen, at, at least for the town employees, we know what their raises are going to be for the next couple of years. Cause we have a, a contract.
Hmm.
He doesn't fall underneath that contract, correct?
That's right.
So the only thing that would concern me is all of a sudden someone gets a, a large sum raise.
Yep. That's a good concern. Um.
You know, if, if, if the raises are, if the raises are in, in, um, in line with what we give our town employees. Great. But I wouldn't want to see someone all of a sudden get a, a large, you know. Some raise. And now all of a sudden you're calculating on a bigger, a bigger number.
Yep. No, I think that that's, that's a, that's a legitimate question and, and it particularly timely because, uh, in this year's budget, the, uh. The W P C A did in fact, um, request an increase of, uh. Greater than the two point five percent that the, uh, town had agreed to with the other employees. Uh, that request was denied by the board, but it, but it was requested. Um, that would not have covered the thirty-three percent that increase. But don't forget when, you know, we're talking, um. You know, of, of the sixty, you're, you're talking twenty, twenty-five hours of. Of, of time that is coming out of, out of a person's, uh, ability to, to raise money. Whatever that, whatever that salary works, works out to from both jobs. And this, I believe, will, um. Will cover that. But if you feel strongly at all, then we can, then Richard can add this, this caveat. I, I'm, I'm comfortable either way with it.
Um, J, uh, Angus, um.
Yep.
And again, I'm, I'm not a, a, a labor attorney. So, um, but if, if, is there an issue? You know, if you do, in addition to just adding something, which is a, presumably the union would say, well, it's, it's just something in addition. But if there's going to be a chain, and I don't know if everyone at the W P C A are, are in a union or not. But if you're going to, if you're going to make something ineligible, I think that may be a, uh, subject of bargaining. You know, in other words, if, 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 if the union, if the plan is, if the person is being, um. If you take this, you're no longer eligible for something else in the plan.
Yep. Oh, I got you.
Um, I, I, it might be something that the union would have to at least be, uh, presented with.
Well, where, where, would this, where we talked earlier about having, once you elect to retire, that, that, that. Retirement payment or whatever, whatever that schedule is, is locked in at that point. If there were any subsequent re, increases in salary at the. The water pollution control or whatever, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect because that person elected to retire at that fixed amount, regardless of the number of years left or the, or the rate of the other employees.
Yeah. No, I, I mean, I, what I'm saying, uh, Jim, I think maybe you're saying the same thing is that, um, if. If, if you, if you do say, if we do, if the amendment as, as the draft is written, were to say, should you get. A higher final salary that would translate into a higher pension calculation. Should that happen, the plan will pay you that true up. Um. There, there, what the, you know, that, that's just in a, you know, the, the, the union employees are being protected there, you know? In other words. There's no change to the plan. They're just being given the chance to start a pension while they're employed. But if you were to say, anyone who elects this is no longer eligible for any other possible change in their pension. I guess somebody who's a labor attorney would have to decide, is that something that the union?
I would think that it would because this, this pension plan does in fact affect a couple of them, union employees.
Okay.
Those are falling by the wayside, but, um, I would think that that would. And that's okay. If, 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 if you guys decide that, that you feel strongly that you want to have that in there, we can do that. It's not, not.
Again, it just goes back to, we've got a very unique situation right here, right here in this, in, in basically this one person. And, um, in, 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 in all likelihood, hopefully we don't get into this kind of situation again and, and, um.
Yes, I'm fairly confident that's going to be the case.
Exactly.
But I do, I, I do, you know, I, and I'm not trying to influence you guys at all. If you feel strongly one way or the other, it needs to go that way. But I'm just trying to think of a situation where anyone in, in the next year or two or three would end up with a thirty-three percent in, increase. And it's not salary. You're right, Jim. This is not salary. It is hours, but, but those, those, those are comparable to, or very close to comparable to.
Yep.
Cut someone's time by thirty-three percent. I can't imagine them, um. You know, making up, making up that money.
Okay.
Where, so, so again, I, I feel very, very strongly that this does not harm the town or put the town in any harms way whatsoever, I think. Richard, um, has, has done a great job working with our actuary to make sure that this, uh, this is funded pretty tight. Um, uh, Bruce is working pretty hard to make sure that our procedure is followed properly. Um, but also, uh, you know, it gives. It, it gives the town an opportunity to hire a, a, a younger police officer. Um, and, uh, frankly, in this day and age, I think, uh, it's, it's not a bad idea to get, to get a good change. And you have, we have a, a, a resident in town who's going to be retiring from the state for this fairly soon. Who's, um, who really lined up to come in when they retire. So. I think, I think the fact that there is no harm to the town and, uh, and, and some benefit on the other side of that. I, I feel pretty, pretty good about this. And, um. I understand there is some discomfort and that's, I think that's probably shared by all, but, but the end, the end game is, uh, is, is a benefit.
Yeah. And it, and it's, and I'll just go back to what I said, and then somebody's asking the question here, Gary Clark. It's, it basically is this one person that is in this dual role here. And again, like I've said many times, we don't plan on having that situation here in town again. But we need to be able to, to make it work. If it does happen and we need to make it work equitably for the town and the employee that is in the position that they're in now. And is going to reach the age of sixty-five and wants to make some change in, in his life. So.
Yes, that's right. And you know, I think any change to a pension, any change to any plan comes as a result of a situation that arises.
Absolutely. Yep.
We have a situation now that came up that probably was not even thought about twenty-five years ago and.
Exactly. Exactly.
He was hired. He was told, this is a great job, man. You come in, you work twenty-five years, you get sixty-five years old and you're, and you've got a pension.
Yep.
Well, it's only begun. A few years later, he retired in another role too. Um. And it's just a little more time for that one, uh, but, but not for this one.
Yep.
So is the change made for a single person? It might sound like that, but if the change is made in such a way that, that it benefits all of the employees for the.
Yeah. And if it happens again, it'll be covered. Right. Yeah. Absolutely. Yep.
So I don't, uh, I'm not, I don't want to push anybody into anything. If you have, if you have any, any, any thoughts, um, express them. And if you don't, um, then we could, uh, I'll, I can change the screen. And we can, uh, and Bruce, Bruce will jump in when I, when I boot this up, but we can, uh. Um. We can, uh, adopt the resolutions if you guys would move them. So let me see if I can. Make this screen so I can do what I'm trying to do. Still, we'll see everybody. Oops, there's everybody. Got that. Stop share. So that, maybe that works.
There we go.
Now let's see, share the screen. And Gary's, um, Gary's question again is, uh, I think Gary's got another chat question up. For, in addition to the question we had on, don't see where it is. Okay. So we are going to change a town pension for one person. No, the pension is changed for everyone that is a part of the pension plan.
Correct.
Um, this, this particular amendment is being made to adopt the plan to a situation that has come up. Um, and, and that, that, this amendment, in my opinion, will help not only a particular employee, but all of our employees. As well as the potential benefit to the community. So, I don't have, I don't have any problem with that. Um, let's see if I can get back to focusing on sharing the screen. Uh, let's see. Board resolution. And Jim and Dwayne, I think you have this already in front of you. This certainly was, um. Provided with the, uh, agenda. So citizens have a chance to get that done. If, uh, if you all are comfortable with that, the resolution, um, that you've got in front of you is, um. The town of Deep River Board of Selectmen, um, members of the town of Deep River Board of Selectmen do hereby adopt the following. Got a regular meeting at the board at which a quorum was present and acting throughout. Resolve that the town of Deep River employees retirement plan be amended as set forth in the proposed twenty twenty plan amendment attached here too. Resolve that the first selection is authorized to execute the attached plan amendment to the town of Deep River employees retirement plan in order to effect the above resolution. Um, certification and I, Angus McDonald, the first selection of the town of Deep River Board of Selectmen to certify that. Before going into true and correct copy of the resolutions adopted at any meeting. Of said board duty can be even held on July fourteenth, twenty twenty, at which meeting a quorum was present and voting throughout and that such resolutions are in full force and effect. And witness whereof, I appear unto set my hand this day and we can, uh, we can sign this after the resolution is made. Um. So I think the next, next item would be, or the next step would be for someone to move that these resolutions be adopted. And then we can discuss that a little further or we can just, uh.
Um, I make a motion that we, could you move it back down again, Angus?
Yep.
Make a, make a, a motion that we accept the resolutions. Um. Resolve, um. How do I say it? The, make a motion that we accept the resolutions of the board of selectmen as, as published. Um, in this, uh, this document here. Um.
Yep. And as read.
Yeah.
As, as, as presented to the board at this meeting. Yes.
Okay. It's presented to the board. Yeah. This, this, this document. So as presented to the board at this meeting on, on the fourteenth of July, twenty twenty.
A second.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Okay, then I think, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And no one opposed? Okay, so the resolution that, that carries. I will take that off the screen. Thank you, guys. I think that, there was a lot of discomfort. There was a lot of conversation. I know that you guys were corresponding with the attorneys. And I appreciate the effort, the learnings about this. It's certainly nothing that I know a heck of a lot about, but I'm learning more and more. Richard and Bruce, I think your, 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 your help is appreciated. Let's see. That's, so, the next item on the agenda is all the audience of citizens. It's really a notice to, to citizens that the town hall is, is open for to the public, you know, on a, on a reduced scale, but we, you know, folk visitors aren't. If you need to come into the town hall, you certainly are allowed to. You just need to check in, sign in. And that's been happening for a week now and it's it's working pretty well. Everyone is, the building's been fortified, I guess.
Yeah.
We will be, you should be seeing some, the town should be seeing some, some paving going on. We're going to be working on Kelsey Hill right now. I think we talked about that last time. You'll be out there patching that and shortly following the patchwork, then we'll be doing the rejuvenation of that road. And we will also see Lord's Lane, the, the south end of Lord's Lane and Anderson Lane have been in bad shape for a while. We're going to get those up on Hemlock Drive Extension.
Who's doing the paving, Angus?
That has not been decided yet. We've got numbers from five different firms, ranging from American, Tilton, to some local guys too. And we're still, still waiting on a couple, a couple of other numbers. Who, who the road will be also will be done. I said, I think I said Hemlock. The other thing, we are working very hard to put together a project. If anyone has any thoughts on some of the the state has released, some is going to be opening up the steep grants again at a much reduced rate, but still a steep grant, it's a steep grant and grants a rate. So let's, we'll try to get some projects going on that. The reduced rate does, does impact some of the projects that we had in mind. Something better than nothing, so that'll be good.
Angus, I, I think we're, we're going to spin off now, if that's okay.
No, that's fine. Thank you guys very much for coming. I appreciate it. So as far as I know, we are done with this. We will sign it and
Yep.
make it real. Do we, should we send you copies of that? Yes, let's see.
Yes, please. And, and also to Matt Sicilia.
Yes, yep, absolutely. All right, thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
I don't have anything else, anyone else in the audience have anything?
There was something that was just in my mind that they just went flying out. So couldn't have, I guess it couldn't have been.
Important.
Well, how is, you know, let me, let me ask you a question.
When that happens.
My mother used to say that all the time. It couldn't have been very important though. But, you know, how has it been up by the quarry? I, I spoke with, with Haynes and they were putting calcium down more. They told me they were going to. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't want to be obvious when I drive over. They, they know my vehicle.
Yeah.
We have here in, in this section of town, we've had some pretty good downpours of rain. And I think that has in itself helped the dust, you know, the, the, the product that was going through might be wetter than it normally is.
Yeah.
I, I personally don't want to let them off the hook. I want to keep the pressure on if we can, if, if it's not just for my residence and where I live and the, in the middle Flatwood Park. And I'm not saying we're going to let them off. I'm just saying we need to, you know, we need to keep some, I think we need to keep some, keep some pressure on them to do, to do, to do the right thing, regulatory or otherwise, just do the right thing.
Right. And that's why I was asking, that's why I was asking you how it has.
Yeah, they, they had a, they had a dump, a dump truck leave the other day that lost part of its load and, and there was, there was stuff all over and, and that's and, and, you know, I don't.
That'll happen.
Yeah, that happens all the time and whose responsibility it is and, and all that. We could, we could go around and round and round and, and point fingers.
There was an awful lot of his load.
Oh, yeah. I saw you that day, Dwayne. Yeah, yeah, yep. Just trying to think of what it was. I can't, I can't look. Oh, well, it's not important.
Well, that's okay. We, I had a, there was a merchants meeting last night I attended.
I know what it was. Okay.
And they, they've decided to cancel Family Day.
Yep.
So that's too bad. Another one, another one bites the dust. This is muster weekend coming up.
Oh, wow.
In many years. And we worked very hard with the muster committee to try and figure out how we could do this. And then really the suggestions that were, that we were able to do did not attract that much interest in, in the drumming and the pipe and drumming communities. So they're going to do kind of a virtual muster. Everybody's just going to gather in their own areas. But, you know, I, I will give them credit. They did a lot of research and they were very, very cautious about trying to move this forward.
Right.
And they, they did some research on, on the repellent of the aerosol when you're playing the pipe and it's, you know, six feet is nowhere near. I think they were saying sixteen or eighteen feet. But I commend them, you know, and we, we both told each other that we're going to work pretty hard to make next year even better. But, but we will miss that this year. We missed the family day this year. We have not canceled. I was talking with Carol today. We haven't canceled the fireworks yet, but I'm not sure how we're going to be able to do that. It's right in triple E season too, so who the heck knows what we're going to do.
Yep. I, I remember what I was going to say.
Oh, good. What's that? I thought I could kill enough time, Zeke.
Yeah, thank you. It worked. You know, you and Angus, Angus, you and I discussed the historical society. And the mowing and they are, I'm, I'm a trustee and we had a trustees meeting socially distanced outside. Not this past weekend, the weekend before, and they're grateful to the town for the, for the one mowing. It is a, it is a money situation for them. It's when the, when the stone house isn't open and you, and it, and there's been limited activity in the, in the, in the, the meeting room, you know, whatever it's called in the back. It's, it has put a financial strain on the organization and and if, if they need another mowing and they don't have a volunteer, they do pay Alan Majeski, who has been doing it for a number of years. And I, and I'll put it out there and is, he's been doing it for a long time, but I asked him if they ever, you know, if it's a matter of money, did they ever ask for competitive bids? And they said, they said, no, they're pretty loyal to Alan. And, and that's fine. Alan does a good job. There are other people that have volunteered to mow when, when it's needed. And that might happen. So I think just when it looks like it's getting a little shaggy and if volunteers don't do it and, and if the town has the capability financially or otherwise to do it occasionally during the course of the summer. I know it would be greatly appreciated. It's, everything's slowing down now because it is July and August and things don't grow quite as much. So anyway, that's that was from the historical society. Again, they're very, and they're, they're conscious of what their facility looks like, you know, obviously, but if it's, if it's a money situation, their, their income because of, oh, and they, and they, they have decided not to open the stone house itself. It is a museum and it's, it's a house. It's not set up for social distancing and one-way travel and, you know, all the stuff that's so they've, we've elected not to open the stone, the stone house to the public this, this summer and, and look at it again next year.
Right. Well, that's probably why. It's certainly safe.
Yep.
But you know, I'll tell you, I will give the merchants credit. They're working pretty hard to come up with other ideas to keep people thinking about Deep River and coming to Deep River and shopping and eating and doing whatever we do in Deep River. Maybe at a reduced level, but still trying to keep, you know, they're not just hunkering down and saying hi. And I know Jim and Brenda are working hard to keep, keep open over there. As is everybody on Main Street and all around. We had, you know, I think, I think, you know, Deep River, while Deep River and Connecticut in general is doing well, the, the nation is, is maybe not so much. And we have to look hard to, to really remain vigilant in what we precautions that we take. And I know that, and I know, I know that the, the healthcare and the first responders are right on the first line with that, but the food, food service industry is right behind them as far as public coming in. And it's very, it's important that we support those folks, but also it's important that we, that we help them by, by wearing our masks and keeping our distance and doing all that stuff.
There was, there was one other historical mention in the back corner of Devitt Field. And I don't know where it is. I haven't seen a map, but there is a piece of property back there that is historical society property. And I guess there, at one point, there was a fence back there, but because Triton Football was being operated back there, there was some sort of agreement back when Smitty was the first selectman that, that, that property would be used and the, and the fence was removed so that there would be more space for the Triton Football to play down there.
Okay.
I think it needs, it really should be readdressed and as to, you know, whether, whether the fence should be put back up or, you know, we can, we can just have a verbal or written agreement that, you know, part of that property, however much it is, I don't, I haven't seen the layout, but I understand that there is, there is part of that closer to the historical society of the back field of Devitt that is their property, not the town.
Yep, I think we're all aware of that.
There used to be a fence, but there isn't now. So.
Where the strawberry patches used to be.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I, and I've said it about to my, on my ambulance board that I'm on in the historical society. I think we all need to be aware as, as elected officials and citizens and all that, that the historical society, even though it says deeper of historical society, it's not a it's not a deeper, it's not deeper of a property. It's, it's private property. And, and again, it goes the same with the ambulance. I think a lot of people might in town think that because we fund the fire department, we fund the ambulance and we don't do that either. So when people are thinking about doing charitable contributions and all that, don't say, oh, that's a town thing. I pay taxes for that. Just, you know, every, I think everybody just needs to be reminded of those little things now and then. So.
Yep. Yep, that's good. Thank you. Yeah, that, that area back there, I, I'm not sure if Carol came up, but we were, there was brief conversation in the early spring about building a community garden back there for folks to, to lease a plot and, you know, eight by ten or eight by five or whatever plot and, and grow their vegetables or grow their flowers. And it sounded like a really nice idea and kind of lost its, lost its wind with, when the pandemic struck. But I, I think it's a nice idea and it's a great place for it. Just have to get some water back there.
Yeah.
But anyway, unless anyone has anything else, I certainly would take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn at seven thirty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you very much.
Great night.
Have a good night, guys.
Night.
Good, Lori.